Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, May 26, 2020. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Zado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Aaron? Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden? Twelve out of fourteen.
Okay, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business tonight. A reminder to speak directly into the microphone so that way we can get this recorded. Next up would be item number three, approve the minutes from March 24, 2020, April 14, 2020, and April 18, 2020. I'm sorry, April 28, 2020. I have a motion. So moved, Knopf.
Second, Uer.
Motion by Knopf, second by Uer. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Next up would be items to remove, add, or change. We are going to rearrange this a little bit tonight. Items nine, ten, here, I'm sorry, eight, nine, and ten are going to be moved up to right after the consent agenda, so they'll be before seven, and then we'll go back to the regular agenda. Okay, do we have any matters from the public this evening? Anybody from the public that wishes to address us for something that's not on the agenda?
I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Okay.
Alan, Alan, this is Drew, I just joined in.
Okay, so now we are thirteen and one. Okay, thank you. So hearing nothing from the public, we will move on then to the consent agenda. I don't hear him, I'll go ahead and just read it. The only thing on the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the Cow Executive Session Minutes from March 10, 2020. Do we have any?
Thank you, my audio went out, thank you.
Okay. I believe, I didn't get a reply back, I sent an email about this, there is a misprint in it or wrong, it's VWR in this, midway through the minutes. Can't remember what the, what the three letters were, but they were not VWR.
Perfect, I think I put DWR, so I'll crack that and send it to Ms. Newman.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion for approval on the consent agenda?
Dan, so moved. Second, Knopf.
Okay, motion by Chantet, second by Knopf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up for our change in the agenda would be item number eight, which is Resolution 20-75-R, award a grant under Downtown Signage Assistance Grant Program within the downtown historic district for Soma Studio, Five North River. Alderman Callahan?
Thank you. This is for, under the facade grant improvements, allowing the grant to be used by Somo Studios at Five North River. The grant program has been around for years. It is a thousand dollars or fifty percent of the project cost, which is lower. The total cost for the signage for this project came in at 281040, and the work has already been done, as was pointed out in the memo by Chris. The eligibility for being able to apply for this is not precluded if the work has already been done, so long as it meets all the other guidelines.
Chris, do you have anything else you want to add on this?
I do. Am I on now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, also, I'm hoping Ms. Espinoza, who's the owner of Somo Studio LLC, is on board. Are you, Denise, are you here?
Chris, this is Howard. Denise is on, she is listening, but I don't see a microphone or a way for her to communicate right now.
Okay, well, what I'll do is I'll introduce it, and then when I'm done, if she can click on the microphone, but I'm hoping that even if she can't, and I'm hoping she can, but if not, I should be able to explain it. I thought Alderman Callahan explained it well, that it's a request for a grant for downtown signage. She's eligible under every standard, it's a little different than we're normally are used to, because typically, the grant application and ultimately the consideration by the council occurs prior to executing the project. That's partly my fault, I kind of let it slip. I thought maybe she and I would talk, but she moved ahead and she followed all the regulations with respect to the Historic Preservation Commission, they reviewed it, as is required, they gave us a certificate of appropriateness, and she got the permit per the city's building code regulations, and she put the sign up. So, at some juncture it was at her risk, because she hadn't got the grant yet, but she didn't have any reason to believe that the grant wasn't processing simultaneously. So, with that said, I'm recommending that the city approve it, a couple reasons, one of which it's a nice sign, another which is that she, far as she knew, she was following all the regulations. If anyone's at fault for having the sequence of events be slightly out of order, it's on me. And third, you know, for someone to undertake a brand-new business, especially filling a space of this criticality, I mean, it's, it's a nice space right on the North River, China left. I think it's, you know, obviously there's a risk there, taking, taking on this project and opening this business in our current environment, so I would like to try and convince the council tonight, if need be, that this entrepreneurial risk should be, you know, if nothing else, rewarded, certainly not penalized, and that everything else in terms of the merit of the program, the spirit and the letter are being adhered to here. So that said, with the $2,800 grant, or rather, project cost, she's entitled to either fifty percent or a thousand dollars, whichever is lesser, in this case it's a thousand dollars. So I'm recommending that the council, or the Cow, I should say, move to the council with the positive recommendation, Resolution 20-075-R, which is the resolution and the allied agreement allowing her to receive this grant, and she's already submitted all the paperwork indicating that she's paid in full, including a waiver from, a lien waiver from the contractor, so soon as she gets the grant next Monday, hopefully, I'll process for reimbursement. Are there any questions? I'm happy to answer them, short of that. If you want to check again, Howard, if Denise is on.
She still doesn't have a microphone, Chris.
Okay, well.
Hi, I'm Jennifer. It's Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer. Hi, Jennifer.
Yeah, Chris, I, I think since it did meet all the conditions, and the, it's silent about reimbursement after the fact, that's not a deal killer for me at all. It's doing exactly what the purpose of this program was designed to do, which was assist in the cost of the sign improvements, so I do not have any problem whatsoever with it. Anyone else?
One quick comment, and I meant to email this ahead of time, it's Soma, in a couple places it says Somo, but it's Soma Studio, just maybe that could get fixed before City Council.
I will fix that. Who was that, I'm sorry?
Abby.
Hi, Abby.
Hi, sorry.
Sorry, that's my typo, I'll fix it before it goes, I'll send the correct version to Jenny, I should say.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? With that, I move we approve to City Council Resolution 20-75-R, awarding a grant under the Downtown Signage Assistance Grant Program within the downtown historic district, Soma Studio, Five North River, in the amount of $1,000.
Second?
Second, Meitzler.
Motion by Callahan, second by Malley. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That can go on, consent. Okay, thank you. Next up will be item number nine, Ordinance 20-35, amending official zoning map for a general commercial district with planned development overlay district on 300 North Randall Road, 1899 and 1990 McKee Street, Menards Incorporated, the applicant. Alderman Callahan?
Thank you, yes, my absolute favorite store to get lost in. This is for the planned development and a plat of subdivision requested by the expansion for Menards. I do realize there is a lot to take in on this one, so Drew, if you would like to get into some of the details on this one.
Sure, certainly, Alderman Callahan. With this project, there's a number of items that are changing on the property. The first would be that the existing detention pond would be moving to the south of McKee Street. That would free up room for the development of a new accessory structure or storage building for merchandise, as well as an exist, or expansion of the yard. In addition to that, there's expansions to the existing building, as well as a new entrance canopy into the yard to the north. So there's a significant amount of work that's going with this project. The Plan Commission did hold a hearing on November 6. Within the hearing, there was a condition before it could be moved on to approval, that's some drainage issues be worked out with making sure that, you know, that with a high degree of certainty, that the engineering department felt confident with what was being proposed, and we are to that point now, so it is now before you tonight. This site has been approved with planned developments in the past, originally with Ordinance 9548, as well as in 2007, there was an additional ordinance for expansion. This ordinance would essentially expand the overlay district to the south of McKee Street to pick up what is now the, or what would be the new detention lot, as well as the new, or the previous detention lot that will now become part of the Menards site as well. And then also with the, with the agenda tonight, there is that resolution to approve a final plat. As I mentioned, there are basically ten modifications to the zoning code. A number of them have to deal with setbacks, basically to allow for some of these expansions. There's a, some setback relief necessary for the pop-outs to the building, there is some relief required for the proposed location of the storage building, and then there's some relief necessary for landscape area requirements as well. The other major zoning relief would be to allow the north entrance to the yard, basically to encroach to the property line. So the, with the conditions of approval tonight, there, there's two conditions on the ordinance. One is for final approval of staff, or final staff level approval of final engineering, as well as a requirement that Menards not object to the formation of a backup special service area, basically to assure that in the event that there's any extraordinary need or cost to take care of the detention area or the piping that would go from the north subdivision to the new pond, to make sure that that could be addressed through the special service area if necessary. So at the public hearing, there was one speaker from adjoining property who did ask the Plan Commission to, taking into account noise concerns. The Plan Commission did vote to recommend approval. That was through a series of votes, most being five to zero, however, there was a vote of four to one to recommend approval of the planned development. And they did recommend approval of the plat subdivision by a vote of five to zero. So the alternatives before the council are they, you can recommend approval or denial of the ordinance and resolution as presented, or consider amendments before you take action on that. In terms of impacts, we did identify that this would be a significant expansion of an existing anchor on Randall Road. It would intensify development and use of the property, but that there would be benefits with the potential of increased sales on the property. We deny any impacts for staff or city services, and essentially that if there was any increase in city services because of a failure to maintain the property, the special service area condition would assist in that. So we do recommend, as a staff, approval of Ordinance 35, or 2035, subject to the conditions in the ordinance, and Resolution 20077 as presented.
Thank you, Drew. Anybody have any questions for staff?
Go ahead, Nick.
That wasn't me.
Oh.
Hey Marty, it's Mike O'Brien.
Oh, Mike, go ahead, Mike.
So Drew, who owns the property where the retention pond is going to be?
The present pond is owned by, or, and actually, the applicant can correct me if I'm incorrect on this, the, right, the property is owned by the association, but Menards has a contract, and so they would take ownership of the existing pond as part of this project.
And how do they propose to get the storm water across McKee Street?
Essentially, there would be, I believe it's two pipes that would convey the water to the new pond from under the street, and then connecting into the existing system.
So there'll be like an open cut then, right? And how big a pipes are there? I didn't look at the prints close enough. I mean, I guess my concern is, again, you know, we seem to be getting an inordinate amount of rain events, and I just want to make sure that, you know, the conveyance is large enough for the water, so it doesn't wash out the road eventually, you know?
Understood. The Engineering Division did look at, I'm looking for the size of the pipes right now, and I know that was the primary concern with their review of the project, was to make sure that, that number one, that the water would be conveyed in the amount necessary, and two, that if there were any issues with the system, that, you know, there's contingencies available to make that work for that.
If I can jump in?
Yeah, please, Gary.
Hi, this is Gary. We looked at all storm events, Mike, so just so everyone understands, they were required to convey the critical duration, 100-year event to the pond. So if it rains for 24 hours, you may get the most volume of rainwater, but it may not come down at a very fast rate, whereas the critical duration storm is that, is that type of storm we had this weekend, where it comes down very quickly, in a very short amount of time, and then you have to, you have to be able to convey that water to the basin. So that's what we call a critical duration storm, so all, all duration events are able to make it to the pond, Mike.
Okay. And you can appreciate my concerns, Gary, I mean, we, we do have issues throughout our city, and if we're going to put anything new in that's going to, you know, convey storm water and detain or retain storm water, that we're sizing it enough to do what it's proposed to do.
Yeah, and that's, that's why it's taken so long, is we've, we've been working with the developer's engineer for all these months to come up with the design that'll accomplish that.
Okay, just Gary, just for, you know, the, the engineering has been working on, what is it, like the, the storm events from, you know, 1985 or something like that? What, has it been updated to like 2005 or 2010?
This, actually, just in the last year, we've updated our rainfall event, our rainfall tables, and Menards is now going to be following, Menards will now follow the new rainfall tables.
Okay, and that's, that just happened in 2020 or 2019?
2019, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you, Gary, just wanted, you know, make sure that we're aware that it's raining more and more than it ever has in the past, so, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I think Joe also.
Yeah, I'm excited to see this come through, thank you, Marty. I know I had talked with the applicant back when he was first in, in front of Plan Commission, and I've had several conversations with Laura and Gary as this has progressed and got stalled and kind of, I'm glad to see that it's finally moving its way forward and that this is going to happen, I think it's a, it's a good thing for our city. It's great to have somebody investing in their property here in our town, and I'm excited to watch this take off.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? I believe the applicant is here tonight, do you wish to say anything? You don't have to.
Tyler Edwards from Menards here. We're excited to be able to remodel and expand this store. It'll now have the space and amenities that every new store across the country has, so I think it's going to secure our place in this location for a long time to come. Drew did a really good job of summarizing what we're doing, so I won't repeat that, but if you do have questions for me, please let me know.
Thank you. Now, this is all part of the corporate strategy of expanding a lot of the stores and the design on them, and I think a lot of the locations have already been done, so we've been able to see kind of some of the progress on other locations, and I think they look great. I'm glad you're going to be taking a lot of my money, probably. Anybody else have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
Hey Marty, this is Mike O'Brien again. I just want to kind of echo what Joe had said, you know, Menards has been in City Batavia for a long time, and they've been a very good corporate entity in our city, and so it's, I'm glad that they're, they got all this worked out and that they will move forward with it, I think it's, it's about time, so, thank you for your, your input in City Batavia and moving forward, so thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that is, got their hand raised, wanting to discuss this? I know there was one at the Plan Commission. Howard, do we have anybody?
Do not see anybody.
Okay. So with that, I move we approve Ordinance 20-35, amending the official zoning map for the general commercial district with a planned development overlay district, 300 North Rap, 300 North Randall Road, Menard, Inc., applicant.
Second, Knopf.
Second, Meitzler.
Motion by Callahan, second by Knopf. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next up is item number 10, Resolution 20-77-R, approving a final plat of subdivision for Menard's second re-subdivision, 300 North Randall Road, Menard Incorporated, applicant. Alderman Callahan?
Thank you, I believe this was explained in the original presentation by Drew, but Drew, do you have anything additional to add to this resolution?
Nothing additional, but essentially, like I said in the presentation, it's taking the existing pond lots and the remain, the lots that Menards' property is on, and creates one lot out of that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any question?
That would be the one lot for the special service area.
Well, the special service area would consist of that lot, for Menards' portion, it would consist of that lot and the property south of McKee Street.
Right.
There may need to be other property within the special service area, because they, there are other properties that benefit from that pond that is being relocated, so we might have to include those.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, that that would be more than one property owner that could contest having that special service area then.
There, there could be in that situation, however, all of these owners also did have to basically agree with that initial sale, so our hope is that they would be agreeable to that, otherwise the fallback would be that it would be a special service area just of Menards.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Edwards, anything else to add?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. I move that we approve to City Council Resolution 20-077-R, the planned development overlay and plat of subdivision for Menards expansion. I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Oh, no, no. 077R, approving a plat of subdivision for Menard Batavia, second re-subdivision, 300 North Randall Road, Menard, applicant.
Second, Knopf.
Second, Meitzler.
Motion by Callahan, second by Knopf. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That will be discussing probably both of those due to the size of this project at City
Thanks for coming in, Tyler.
Thank you, appreciate it, have a good night.
Thank you. All right, next up is going back to the regular agenda that we hadn't changed, would be number seven, discussion on opportunities for additional outdoor public dining areas on North River Street and elsewhere in the downtown area.
And let me turn my microphone on so that you can hear me, too. So, we have been working on a team that was organized by the Chamber of Commerce called the Revitalization Committee, and we've been meeting on a weekly basis, and the organization consists both of Main Street, the Chamber, and the city, but as well, there are, VATV is a member, and so is the Small Business Center of the LaBonte Community College. And some incredible work really is being done by this team, I have to give kudos to all of our, our partners, as partners who have joined in our efforts. One of those projects I'd like to speak with you tonight about and seek your approval to create three separate downtown outdoor public dining areas, and I will go through them one at a time. I presume you can see my screen? Can people see the map that I'm showing?
Yes, I can.
Yep.
Great, okay. So, the first of these areas is located on the redevelopment site for One Washington Place. It is an asphalt-covered area with an entrance from the sidewalk on Wilson Street, and the proposal would be to put as many picnic tables there as we can, and maintain a safe distance of, we'd like to put the tables 10 feet apart, so that each table can maintain a six-foot distance from each other. The, I'd like to say a tremendous amount of thank you as we were developing this plan and trying to figure out where we would come up with the resources in order to purchase outdoor seating equipments. The Batavia Park District readily agreed to loan us their picnic tables that they ordinarily use for their large festivals to us at no cost whatsoever. The second of these outdoor eating areas that we would create would be off of Houston Street in North Island. off of Houston Street in North Island. Um, this would allow a, uh, a west side area for outdoor public dining and be of assistance to both the strip malls that exist on North Island Avenue as well as, uh, McDonald's, and also, um, over to Aqua Viva as well. And the third of these outdoor dining areas is North River Street. City Council has contemplated for the last couple of years what potentially closing down, uh, North River Street on a temporary basis or on a permanent, more permanent basis might look like. And perhaps this, uh, crisis that we are experiencing due to the pandemic and the opportunity for our restaurants and bars to open, um, or certain areas in order to avail themselves of the opportunities that are being created in this phase three of the Illinois, of the Restore Illinois Plan, perhaps now the timing is right to give this idea a try. And so the areas marked in red is where we would anticipate, uh, that we would place outdoor, uh, seating in the form of those, uh, picnic benches. Um, we would maintain emergency access along this route because we know that we do have businesses, um, down in this area here where the only accessible driveway to get down there in the event of an emergency is this driveway that exists right here. As well, we have businesses toward the, uh, south end of that street that have, uh, serviceable, um, serviceable alleyways where garbage collection is conducted, and some even have apartments with parking spaces located within these alleyways. As well, on the east side of the street, we've got, uh, accessibility where, um, the garbage collection is, is done from this alleyway. So the tables would be placed so that both, um, the refuse collectors and then also the city public works, um, vehicles, because we have a lift station that's located down at the end of this alley, that there would be sufficient room in the road so that access would not be cut off, um, to either of those places. One of the, uh, in order to, for us to, uh, close that street, of course, we need to get a permit from IDOT. We know that takes time, um, during this immediate, uh, COVID, COVID nineteen crisis. Uh, perhaps things, uh, might be expedited, uh, as the state dictates that to its own agencies, but at this point, we're not sure of that. You know, all of this information is very new, having only been announced by the governor last, um, Wednesday. So everyone is, is trying to accommodate to the, the changes that have been made, and we're probably not the only city that will be making an application to IDOT to close a street for a similar purpose. So what our recommendation is, is that during the time that we're applying for the IDOT permit, that we would make River Street one-way. Um, could argue whether it should be north or south, but I think if you at least maintain, uh, one directional way that the roadway is open, then that isn't something that requires IDOT. So, in this area too, I think we want to suggest at the recommendation of Main Street and Chamber that this is a, a place where not only would people be able to consume food that they have, uh, carried out from the business or the business has delivered to their table, but, um, that we would like to try alcohol service or, or consumption in this area as well. It's the intent that this area would be used to benefit those local businesses, and so we, uh, would like to establish a rule that those tables are for food and alcohol that's been purchased from our downtown businesses. And then we suggest times, Monday through Friday, eleven AM to nine PM, Saturday and Sunday, uh, from nine AM to nine PM. And we also may, uh, depending upon if other, uh, areas in the downtown seem amenable to and would, uh, have good criteria for creating additional downtown outdoor dining opportunities, we certainly would consider those as well. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Laura?
Yes.
Um, I like the ideas, um, I also think, you know, that any place where, uh, the private property owners have a space that they can do, I know that the executive order already went out last week, um, that we, you know, try to facilitate those places to, you know, be adjacent to, directly to the businesses, whether it be, you know, in a parking lot, if there's three spaces that they can easily cordon off to use with picnic tables or however they want to try to set that up. If the property owners and/or the restaurants, um, bars, whatever, are able to do that, I think that provides another opportunity for that in different places downtown. This River Street has always been, you know, one where we can use the majority of the street for that, but I think there's other opportunities at other businesses, whether their own parking lot, um, adjacent property next to them that's open, I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunities that we should also look for that as well, um, to allow the businesses to do that.
Yes, in fact, um, some of those places came up on our conversation today, and so we will try to be proactive, um, where we see that kind of opportunity.
Laura? Can I jump in?
Hey Laura, this is Mark.
Yes, Mark?
Yeah, Mark.
I just had a quick question, I'm a little confused about ten feet. Ten feet is significantly more than six feet, and I would imagine that, especially as the summer's heating up, that more people are going to want to take advantage of this, and then we seem to be missing out on, on potential amount of tables.
I'd take whatever, um, advice and direction that the council would like with regard to the spacing of the tables.
Thank you.
Can I interject a couple of things here? Uh, this afternoon, after I think the word got on the street that this was being discussed, I had an opportunity to have a conversation with our friends at McDonald's, and they have a, as you may remember, they have a fairly large grassy area to the rear of their business, to the north of their building, that the drive-through window drives around. And I think they are, as we speak here tonight, they are cogitating about trying to look at that area as a place where they could maybe put tables out that would be facing more on Houston Street than currently is the case, that's one. Aqua Viva has talked to me probably three or four times in the last two or three weeks, uh, trying to find ways that they could do some outdoor dining, and I know they are very actively pursuing the idea that they're going to try to do something specifically in their patio, that's the open space right there at Houston and Water Street, and they also have asked, because their restaurant, if you've been in there, I'm sure most of us have, the porch that they have on the front of it that faces on Water Street is open at two ends, so that would qualify as an open area under the governor's order and would allow them to have that kind of inside space which would have direct outside access, and they could put, I don't know, three or four tables on the inside there. So there are some other folks in the game here that we aren't showing diagrams for, but, uh, this is a very interesting trend, and we do have a lot of interest, uh, from, uh, the downtown business people. I'm led to believe that Brianna's is cogitating about doing something maybe at Wilson and at Island in their parking lot too, so, uh, I think, and certainly, uh, Austin Dempsey has had some conversations with us for his area over there in front of, uh, Riverview Pizza and, uh, the, uh, Daddy O's Diner and, uh, the other one, Panera, all those are over there, they probably are looking at maybe doing something on the sidewalks that span in front of their businesses, so, uh, this could be quite a, uh, re- re- revival, let's say, of downtown, uh, restaurants in a pretty quick hurry, and certainly a trend that I think we all are, are wanting to ex- explore and expand, and we certainly, as we know, we've got at least one more restaurant under construction right now that I think would be very interested in trying to look for some outside business opportunities as far as outside seating and whatever. So I think we should do this, I would encourage us to be a little bit on the cautious side, specifically as it applies to the liquor distribution, because I, I, I was on a call this afternoon with a number of other mayors from the area, and everybody seems to be kind of debating this idea in their own towns as to just how open you allow these towns to become as far as the say of liquor, and are you just going to allow somebody to go in and buy a glass of liquor at some place and then just start walking down the street and going from place to place to place? Uh, I'm thinking that we probably should have some type of a wrist guard or something that, on some of these spots, that we want to make sure that who's there is twenty-one and has been checked and whatever, then we just open this thing up, because I think we could, you have a runaway from us here if we aren't careful of what we're doing.
Laura?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I fully, as I talked with the mayor this afternoon about a lot of these things, um, understand the concerns and doing it the right way, and that's why the unique opportunity for River Street, um, is just phenomenal. That is what this street was designed to do, is to be a pedestrian plaza and a community space, that is, that is everything that I've heard since day one that it was built, and now we are going to be able to, in a roundabout way because of COVID, utilize this community space for that purpose, which is a gathering space, albeit in the most safe distance possible, which is only achieved, I think, through, uh, the ultimate goal would be to close down the River Street, uh, for the excess, to the general public via their cars. Uh, the other opportunities that businesses have, they have their own parking, uh, private parking spaces that they're able to expand, uh, by themselves. Uh, River Street, the businesses there aren't, uh, without our partnership with them in making this a success. Uh, the other spots, uh, that you mentioned, two and three, or I'm sorry, one and two, um, I can't necessarily see people just going and letting people go drink at those locations, but if you keep it in a, in an area where you have a lot of responsible business partners in that area, I think it's just a win-win all around. I'd fully support on three, the idea.
Hey Laura? Mike O'Brien?
Yes, Mike.
So with, uh, River Street, how far north were you going to, say, close off River Street?
Just to State Street here.
If I, if I may recommend, you know, I, when we, when River Street was designed and, and Altamano came before the council and they were talking about the various streetscapes they're proposing, you know, they, they incorporated, they said, you know, we need to use the river, and, uh, so I, I would think, and they said that, you know, River Street and Houston Street around Government Center area, they're like living room, it was like a living room, and, and the center of the living room was the river, and the Peace Bridge would tie both of those together if we just gave access, you know, to the Peace Bridge also, do you know what I mean? Just to make it more of a pedestrian feel along River Street, walk across the, the Peace Bridge, then you're walking around the Government Center, the plaza there, to, to, I guess that's area two, I believe. So, uh, I, I just wanted to throw that out to you, you know, that, uh, we should try to incorporate that Peace Bridge also, and it's just to, you know, sponsor people walking around. They, people engage more when they're walking than when they're driving. Uh, I, and this could, you know, engage our whole community, not that we're looking to get too close, but, uh, you know, we do need to maintain our distance, but, uh, people do like to see one another as they're walking around.
Mm-hmm. Hello, certainly can modify the plans as, as time goes on as well. Is that Jennifer?
Yeah, um, so was there any conversation about potentially, um, closing down Water Street between Wilson and Houston, because we do have a couple restaurants over there that don't have the ability to expand, and potentially closing that down, um, you know, giving Aqua Viva some room, and then the popcorn, um, that would give, um, the Thai restaurant and, uh, the pan restaurant some opportunities for outdoor seating for their customers also.
So one area that we discussed this morning, uh, was the parking area that is on the west side of the street across from, um, the Fifth Third Bank, and so it would be our intention to contact the bank and see if perhaps we might be able to utilize that space, just like you're saying, Jennifer.
Okay, so there's not a potential opportunity of closing down that part of the street, or would that require some IDOT?
It wouldn't, it would require any IDOT approval, but, you know, it, uh, it does have an impact on the downtown traffic flow. So, um, when people are able to return to work and we have our normal traffic situation, in particular, is a way that people avoid the light at Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street during rush hours, is to use, uh, that portion of the street to connect to Houston Street if they need to head north on, uh, Batavia Avenue.
Is it possible to consider that area then for the weekend hours, like a Saturday and Sunday?
Um, the, uh, it is also used by bikers to connect on the trail, so it's just something to take into consideration, certainly council could, um, uh, you vote on whether they want to include that area, but on a weekend, that is heavily trafficked by people who are wanting to connect on the, uh, west side of the river between where the trail ends at the Depot Museum, and then they use Water Street to go down to Union to reconnect to the bike trail.
Laura, it's Scott here, um, one other thing to think about is that there's a lot of private parking lots there, um, the Methodist Church has a lot of park, private parking, since they own most of those buildings there, uh, in addition to the Fifth Third Lot, so I mean, there's a lot of opportunities off the street to provide additional table space.
Yes.
Uh, Laura, Tony here, uh, on River Street, uh, if we stopped at, uh, State Street, uh, does that exclude Tusk then, because they're right on the north corner there of State?
No, it doesn't, I, I mean, but one could certainly walk over to Tusk and, and pick up their food and come over here and, and sit down and eat.
But they wouldn't be able to necessarily have tables just outside their establishment?
Um, no, they could, so that would be something, you know, when you talk about your Hot Pan and your Thai Village and your Tusk and, and many other businesses, that's what the, um, mayor's executive order was meant for, is if people want to expand and create new outdoor dining experiences that are adjacent to this, that's precisely what that's for.
Yeah, I was just looking at River Street as a whole, if we, we, you know, we're, we're closing on River Street to create these possibilities right near these restaurants, I, I would like, you know, like, like, uh, Mike said, if we extended it a little further and include the, the Peace Bridge, um, I think it would include the whole street.
So I would, um, maybe have Gary home time in on this, but if you close off State Street as well, you're going to have the situation of having created a dead end, and so you're going to have people who are pulling in and have to turn around and head out.
If you close the intersection of State and River, as Laura just said, when you come down the hill, you don't, you won't have any other option, it, it'll, you know, you can go into the parking garage, but even then you won't, you'll have to turn around inside there because you won't be able to exit that garage out on the River Street. It really would, would deal with, uh, circulation, and when we built North River Street, Tusk, actually, on the west side of their building, they have a large patio area, they, they can get several tables outside their, their door, and they have a doorway right there that, that walks right down onto that area, so they do have an opportunity if they, if they simply wish to submit an application.
Yeah, so with that plan, there would be space there on that, uh, on, basically, that sidewalk does get much wider there, outside of, okay.
Yeah, Laura's picture is not showing north of State Street, but if you look just north of State Street, um, it's, it's really wide there on purpose, we did that on purpose.
Yeah.
Laura, isn't State Street closed every Saturday though, at River and State? And this would be really just the same market, the farmer's market scenario, just for another ten? temporary time being?
It's the difference of four hours on a Saturday morning versus 24/7.
Alan, this is Elliot.
This is.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I'm, not to any one of these specific ones, but I guess just in general, I'm going to say I'm definitely in favor of, of all of these and certainly supportive of, of the notion of finding whatever real estate and space we can to safely allow people to, to, you know, partake in the downtown businesses. And even if this one, which is, you know, primarily driven to the dining areas, if that can be expanded in any way where, you know, people are able to safely be downtown, safely go into stores, I think, I think it behooves us to help these businesses that have just been crippled by, you know, this, this pandemic. And I'm thinking specifically not of the restaurants, but, you know, some of the antique shops, some of the, you know, retail stores that, you know, have not been able to do carry out and take out and maybe don't have the online presence, you know, anything we do to get people down there safely and respect the social distancing aspect of the governor's orders, I think we should absolutely entertain it and get it to, you know, be processed as fast as we can to allow that extra vibrancy downtown, whether that's on River Street, whether that's on Water Street, whether that's on some of these islands that we have, you know, of, you know, greenery where we have picnic tables, you know, and even expanding some of the areas where we might have picnic tables. I mean, we, we close off enough sections for special events. I mean, let's, let's do it. Let's, let's be radical and, and, you know, look to get these things open.
So thank you very much for bringing that idea up. Another major program that the revitalization committee is discussing is a pledge program. And I'll talk about that in my projects report, but it is meant to build customer trust that they will be safe when they shop in Batavia Stores in our downtown and they go to restaurants and they go to bars. And so I'm looking forward to be able to share more details about that later in the meeting.
Alan, this is Nick. I'd love to weigh in.
Go ahead, Nick.
I'm excited. This, this is great. I think it's an opportunity to monitor and, and, you know, see all the things that we were concerned with originally when talking about shutting River Street. And I know we're not shutting it yet, or that's not your proposal. I think that still has to be on the table, but I think we can start with this and see what the crowd is and what the response is. But I, I still envision at some point, maybe peak dining hours on Friday, Saturday night, shutting down the whole River Street depending on demand and, and social distancing, you know, if we need to, my, my concern from the social distancing, if the street's open, that people are walking down those narrow corridors, right, you know, next to dining patrons and whatnot. So, but that's, we don't know exactly what's going to be good and bad about this. That's the exciting thing. We get to, to try it and, and be nimble throughout the process and, and keep our eyes on this and see what else we can do for these businesses. If it's working, let's, let's expand and, and help them out. So I'm, I'm, I'm fired up and I appreciate staff working with the, our partners and creating this committee, so to speak, and, and being so aggressive and, and quick on this. So I love it.
Great. Thank you very much for the comments. Just for a clarification, we are going to be applying to IDOT for the complete closure of North River Street, but only to state. I think what your, your comments just now, what you mean is yes, we're only closing that much now. Like to see more of it closed in the future if there is a demand for it.
If there's a demand, yeah. I've always envisioned that and always pushed for it, not knowing, you know, we've come across fears that we don't know if they're real or not. And I've had visions that I don't know if it'll come true or not. So this is an opportunity. We all, we all get to, to see what, how it, you know, where we go from here.
Exactly. So, and, and I'd like to just take a minute and share some of those concerns. But in, in conversations with our partners this morning, we agreed that we are going to do our best to try to eliminate the possibility of some of those negatives. You know, there's a reason why cities have established that there's no alcohol consumption in public. And that is because towns didn't have that kind of rule way back when, had instances where people over and by it's in public spaces and made them not very much fun for others who were in the area. And so we hope that that won't be a concern. The other concern that we have is, you know, Monday through Friday, we have, we have public works personnel on, who are on duty and keeping our downtown area clean. It's really not the primarily when these areas will be used. They're going to get heavily used on weekends. There's no one there to maintain the cleanliness of the area if necessary overnight and before they are used the next day. But my, in conversation that we had today with our business partners, they said the local businesses in this area are so excited about the opportunity for this type of situation to exist as an opportunity where their patrons can sit right outside their door and enjoy their businesses. They will make sure that the area stays maintained. As well, we're going to reach out to our refuse holler and see if there are opportunities for them to sponsor some type of refuse receptacles that, you know, give them an opportunity to put their name out there as well. So we're trying to find creative ways to address things that we see as potentially, potential negatives and address them before they happen. But I'm sure that there's half a dozen that we haven't thought of that, that will come up. And just like always do, we'll put our heads together and come up with a solution.
Hi Laura, I've got a comment, a question.
Yes, Joe.
I did have two questions, but the first one gets turned into a comment because trash refuse was the first thing I thought of. And you just hit it. And you hit it because you're right, the, the city employees aren't there over the weekend and that's when it's all going to accumulate. And you've already got things in motion trying to figure that one out. And, and I think that's great because if it gets to looking rundown with garbage and empty bottles and cans, it will quickly become the place that everybody stays away from. And absolutely do not want that. The question I have is, I recall last year, we had some discussions with Chris Faver when he was with Main Street about approaching IDOT and submitting applications to close this section of River Street every weekend in 2020, to get IDOT's approval upfront to do it. And then we were going to go ahead and do that provided Main Street had something scheduled. We weren't just going to close it just to close it, but if something was scheduled, we would. Don't we already have IDOT approval to close that on weekends now?
We do not. What happened is COVID kind of threw the wrench in the works for a lot of outdoor events that Main Street had planned this year. And so they asked us to submit to IDOT for closing the road only for the farmer's market at this point. But I would ask Sheri if she has anything to add to that.
Um, sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, first of all, I'm really thrilled that we're having this conversation. I know that this is not a perfect fit for everyone all the time in every way. But I had the opportunity since last Thursday to talk to about a dozen business owners, restaurants, merchants, salon keepers, several of whom are on this call. And I would say everyone is incredibly supportive of the plan to close the street. Most everyone recognizes the incredible benefit that it gives, not only to the restaurants, but really to the entire community. It gives people a reason to stay downtown. And when they're hungry, they don't have to leave and go back home. And I know that, that many people, they, they want to leave their homes safely and spend time downtown. And as Main Street, I want them to also spend money downtown. And I think this solves both of those. As far as closing the street, I'm obviously, you know, I'm in charge of, of community gatherings and business advocacy. So I'd like to see the entire Warneriff closed, all the way to the, the bike path, the entire bricked way would be ideal for me and, and my initiative. We do have it closed every Friday. And Laura is correct, we didn't request further closure because with COVID, we didn't have the programming set for Second Fridays and things like that. But Laura, how long do you expect that it would take to get that permission to close it longer? Because I know we close it even up to three days for Oktoberfest. So in a situation like this, how long do you think it would entail to ask for a temporary closure in full at Wilson Street?
Um, I would say, if I was just answering that normally, I would say a couple of weeks. But we don't know what the governor's announcement last Wednesday has done to IDOT's workload in this regard. And I'd also have maybe Gary Holm chime in on this question as well.
And one of the things that came up today, when I had my conversation, is it's one thing to close this road for Saturday morning farmer's market. It's one thing to close this road for three days for Oktoberfest. It's entirely something different to close this road from June 1st till October 1st. Because I would imagine no one on this phone call is anticipating that this isn't going to last through the summer month. And so when you get into that long of closure, now we got to consider signal timing at Wilson and Route 25. There's a whole leg of the signal that won't be used anymore. And so that's something that IDOT's going to have to look into and comment on and figure out. It, it becomes more complicated than just a 24-hour period. People are willing to sit through a signal timing, you know, for, for one day, they probably don't even notice it. But if they start sitting through it for a month and two months, they're going to, they're not going to be very happy. So that's, that's why that's going to get worked out.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thanks, Gary. The one thing I will say, and, and I guess this is just my opinion, I realize that what we're asking for, what we're suggesting are, are out of the ordinary allowances. But our business community has experienced out of the ordinary losses. And I, I realize the governor called on municipalities to be creative, to be flexible, and to do whatever is within our power to help these businesses. And I can't think of any better answer to that call to action than to do this for the businesses on River Street that do not have the opportunity to expand into a parking lot or an adjacent area. When we first started discussing this in that committee that, that Laura was talking about, Chris Aiston had said that, that if we didn't allow some sort of liquor consumption in the closing of River Street, it was a missed opportunity. I'd just like to go on record as saying that I think it's more than that. I don't think it's an opportunity. This is a lifeline for some of our businesses that are really teetering on the edge. And as I look around the western suburbs and I see other communities that are considering this, like the mayor said, lots and lots of communities are considering exactly this. If we don't do it, and other communities nearby do, our residents are going to leave and take their money with them. And then our businesses won't just not be expanding and, and filling their outdoor space. They'll lose the business they already have. And that business will go to other communities. So, so I hope we do everything we can to, to be creative, to recognize that things are different. I would hope that IDOT would recognize that as well and take advantage of, of the creativity that we're being, we're being called on for.
Yeah, Sheri, this is Mark. I totally agree with what you're saying there. I don't want to be second on this. So we need to be first. We need to have it ready as, as close as we can to what we've talked about for this weekend, so that, that we don't lose the opportunity because it will be a missed opportunity. And one weekend is, is going to make a difference to a lot of these businesses, being able to get out there. So, you know, I'm totally in favor of this. Like I said, I would like to see the tables a little bit closer because if it is one of these things that, that blows up, you know, having as many tables as we possibly can, keeping the social distancing is, is going to be the best way to make this as successful as possible. So I would like the tables to be as close to six feet apart as possible. I mean, if that's what the, we're telling private businesses to do, then we should be in a private parking lot. Then we should be doing the exact same thing in our public area because these businesses are restricted from doing anything because they're on River Street.
Yeah. Mark, this is Elliot. I would absolutely agree. Sheri well said. I think in particular, this is not the time to be timid or to just look at how we've done things all along. This is a very atypical anomaly, something that is just absolutely throwing all businesses for a curve. And, and this is just again, where we have to be innovative. If, if we just try to do things as we always have, I think other towns are just going to blow past us and we're going to be left behind.
I wholeheartedly agree with everything that Sheri said, exactly 100%, 1,000%. The way that we're doing this is to make sure that safety is the first guidelines. I understand about traffic patterns and so on and so forth. People would be glad to sit in traffic for the time being instead of sitting in their houses. So I don't think that's necessarily something that we should discourage because right now, the only way for the interior of these businesses is to be on the outside per the governor's order. And we should treat the outside no differently than we would treat the interior for these businesses. Laura, I do have a question regarding kind of along the same lines of inside, outside. Part of what the guidelines state for a business to be considered outdoor dining would be whether or not they, if they could remove 50% of a wall partition or window. And several businesses would follow, would be able to do that, I believe. Riverside with the garage doors, Bar Evolution with their windows, Aqua Viva. And in that, the regulations that the guidelines put out by the governor's office were that if you're able to open at 50%, they are allowed to have seating in that area within eight feet of the opening. Do we have a way to convey that information to the businesses?
So your understanding of the 50% is not the same as my understanding of the 50%. I thought that of four walls that exist, two of them must be open air. So for instance, Aqua Viva has that porch area. It has two solid walls and it has two walls which are screens. Because I think of this outdoor seating is, what they're looking for is, you know, air, air is able to flow through, not just that it comes in from one direction. So I'll seek clarification on that. And if they mean that you can remove 50% of one side of your business and that would be considered 50% open, that, that should be pretty easy to determine which one it is. And if it is, as you say, then we'll be happy to get that word out.
Yeah, I'm just reading where it just says, for the purposes of these guidelines, a drinking area outdoor is considered, if it meets any of the following, indoor space where 50% or more of a wall can be removed via the opening doors, panels, provided the dining tables are within eight feet of such opening. It doesn't say anything about the other walls. So that's why I was just, just a literal interpretation of what that said. And that's why I was just asking for clarification.
Okay. Happy to get that.
Laura, this is Abby.
Yes.
I, I wanted to reiterate, I think Nick, you said it best too about being nimble and how some of these, some of these new changes and plans won't all probably meet expectations and we'll, we'll observe kind of where people go and where people sit and where they don't. And maybe, you know, maybe River Street and Houston Street are really popular and maybe Area One is, is not as popular. So we, we modify and we move some tables and we, we find other places where it seems people are congregating and try to give them some safe place as well to, to expand into. And it'll be a fun experiment and it'll take, you know, hopefully all of us being downtown as often as we can safely to observe and participate and find out what works and what doesn't. And then make modifications as we go, which is really kind of exciting. And I want And I wanted to, I don't want to derail us too far from the River Street or the Houston Street conversation, but I wanted to throw out the idea of parklets to the group tonight, which I know I've mentioned to a few of you before. And if you're unfamiliar with what parklet means, I know you're at your computer, so you could Google real quick a picture of a parklet and see what the ideas are that are out there. It's essentially an extension of the sidewalk onto a street parking space that serves as a small public park. And it's often, as you can see from examples that are out there, they're usually quite creative, very inviting, but they do provide a little extra space in front of a business that maybe isn't on River Street or accessible to one of these other areas we're talking about. And it helps improve the history and environment as well. So as we know from our downtown, we have, we have a lot of these areas that we could probably work with in an effort to keep our citizens safe as they return to downtown businesses. This might provide a really nice option for different places around, for around town as we, you know, just another tool to try and recover from the pandemic. I've done some searching around. There are cities that have been doing parklets for years. The first ordinance I found dated back to about 2013. I found examples in New York, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Las Vegas, Henderson, Nevada, Kansas City, Green Bay, Milwaukee, Phoenix, Charlotte, Oakland, Seattle. And then there's also examples right here in Illinois in Monticello, Rockford, Chicago, Peoria, Springfield, Normal, Freeport, Evanston, and then in Aurora as well. So these ordinances, they lay out their application, the fee schedule, the guidelines for safely installing them and designing them. There's always a requirement for the business or the sponsoring organization to have a $1 million general liability policy that adds the city as an additional insured for bodily harm, property damage, and indemnifies the city from any responsibility as a result of issuing a permit for a parklet. A lot of them are only run from May to September to allow for snow removal. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't want to derail, like I said, but if another alderman would join me, I'd love to discuss them, be more in detail at a future meeting. And I'll be happy to talk around all of the examples that I have found as well. I thought Rockford did a really good job too. It's the one I read the closest.
Okay, so noted.
Okay, so does anybody else want to say anything? Is there anybody from the public would like to comment on this?
There is no one with their hand up right now. Oh, hang on.
Okay.
James Joseph would like to speak. I am, yep, his microphone is on.
All right, thank you. Hi, everyone.
Go ahead.
I want to thank you for the opportunity just to add a few thoughts. I want to preface everything I say by the fact that I live on River Street. Not only do I have the bookshop on River Street, but I also live on River Street just two blocks down. And that's where I take my walks every day. People in the city are really doing a very good job as citizens of following the safety guidelines. So I, anything that, anything that I say is said with an experiential knowledge of how good our town is at following safety guidelines. Because I've seen it and I've noticed it. I am personally all in favor of anything that we can do on River Street or for these separate instances of special table allocation. I can't tell you enough how much this drives commerce down River Street and for a business like myself that is kind of considered like, not a very huge business. It's incredible for me every time we do it, especially during the farmer's market. And it was incredibly beneficial during Oktoberfest for me as well. And I talked to several other businesses, business owners, and I know that they're on board, as Sheri has talked to them as well. And thank you, Sheri, for everything you do. I, the only thing, there's a couple of things I just want to say. I think limiting it to State Street, you're not going to believe the response when you do this on River. I think you're going to need more room than that. Because people are itching. And anytime we can provide more space, will make people feel better. So I know that Mark, you threw out about keeping it as close to six feet as possible. But if you made people, it would make people feel better with like just traversing. If you spread it out to eight, but then that would allow, that would allow, that would make people feel even safer. And then you could throw it all the way down. I mentioned this to a couple of people. You could throw it all the way down to the entrance of that parking lot, next to the tea tree. I don't know what the tea tree's thoughts are on that. But the tea tree is going to need seating and Tusk will need seating. I think Tusk is, Tusk would really benefit. But anything you can do along this thing, these plans are incredible. And I see the foot traffic on River, not only when I'm doing stuff at my shop, but also on my walks and looking out my window. The foot traffic on River Street is constant during this time. And this is, this is exactly, I'm sure, what was envisioned when this street was put in. And so anything that we can do would be incredibly beneficial for everybody down here. And I really want to thank everybody that has already jumped on this and worked through, and any time that anybody spent working on this, because these plans look great. It's just, I think there's an incredible opportunity down on River that it could go even further down. So with that, I just want to say thank you, and I'm all for this, and I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you.
Thanks, James. One of the things that we could consider in the future as well, if we wanted to expand north but not impede the flow of traffic, is utilize some of the eastern parking spaces that are within the Larson Becker lot. And put the tables there so that pedestrians, runners, bicyclists, dog walkers can all still utilize the sidewalk and the automobile traffic can still make its way through. But it would take up some of the parking spaces there. But I think we want to encourage people to do more walking into our downtown and biking into our downtown.
Yeah, every, yeah, people are walking all the time now. So if we, if we encourage, I mean, just by limiting the parking, I don't think that's going to be a problem at all. Because people are going to walk. And then there's, if people are on the far west side, they just, there's plenty of parking for them to just drive down, park, and then walk on over from there. And it encourages people to stay mobile, especially, you know, myself included. We've probably all put on a few extra quarantine pounds. So anything that keeps us moving, it not only is good for us, but it's also good for businesses.
Thank you.
Laura, it's Sheri, if I may, just to respond to a couple of things that James brought up. I did speak with Missy at the Tea Tree and about this. And she is in favor of closing the street. And even though she has built up some good curbside pickup business for her tea, she said that she recognizes even closing it all the way, the extent of the Warneriff, I believe the bricks go, go all the way to the bike path there just past State. She saw the advantage in the number of people that it brings to her door and to the street in general. So I just wanted to reiterate that I had spoken to her regarding that. As far as the farmer's market on Saturday, we've moved a fair number of our booths already to the parking lot. I know Beth Walker's on this call as well. And we've spoken about the few that we will need for the farmer's market that run in front of the parking garage and moving those picnic tables out of the way in order to accommodate that for the four hours or so that we need to on Saturdays. We think we can handle that. We'd love some volunteer support pulling them away. But we think we can, we can handle that and it won't be an impediment. So whichever you guys decide to close it to State or to close it further to the bike path, we can work with. And, and I think our, like I said, I talked to about 12 different businesses on River and all seemed in favor of, you know, whatever we can do, as many people as we can bring to the street is a good thing.
Hey, Alan. It's Michael O'Brien.
Go ahead, Mike.
I haven't, I agree with James and with Sheri and with Tony had said earlier. I think we should extend the River Street closure further to the, to the north and close off State Street. That's not all of State Street, but I don't know, 200 feet to the east where people come, you know, we can use signage, you know, advanced signage. And if people still come down State Street, we can at least give them the opportunity to turn around through the parking lot. But I think, you know, that'll give all the businesses, especially the ones on the east side of River Street, I should say, the north end of River Street, every advantage just for success. This is really, I think we're in survival mode now. It's not just, you know, make people more wealthy. We're in survival mode. And then the people on the north side of River Street, the north end of it, they need every opportunity also. And I understand Gary's point, but these are, these are kind of trying times and uncharted waters. And so if it's a little inconvenient for people, it's been inconvenient for the business owners for quite some time now. And so I think we need to give them every, every opportunity.
If we go 200 feet up State Street, that would close off both.
I don't know what the footage is. I just threw out a number, 100 feet, 50 feet, whatever it is. It's just.
So you would say up to the entrance to the parking garage, that only.
Yeah, something like that. Whatever's going to work. You know, that's all I meant.
Okay. I'm, we'll have to take a look at like how many more tables that gets us because I don't think that we would want to put the tables against the barricade that forms the street closure. So we hop past that to the other side of the street. And then we're talking about putting however many tables fit out of Tusk. Right? I think the only thing that we're gaining by closing State Street. To put those two tables out there anyway. I think there's a lot to be gained by closing State Street.
Alan.
Marty, go ahead.
Yeah, just so that we kind of are all on the same sheet of paper, do we need to make a motion to direct staff to close, to approve a, get approval from IDOT from either Wilson to State or Wilson to, what's the next, Spring?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve, that we direct staff to obtain IDOT approval for River Street closer from Wilson to Spring.
Second.
Second.
Second. I do have a question about that, though. I didn't think that that was the extent going down River Street is not the issue. It's just the fact that we're closing that entrance to River Street from the Route 25 intersection. So that was my understanding is they're just, they're worried about the signage to make that, to keep people from making those turns, based on my discussions with IDOT.
Laura, and we have to do it because we would be closing State at River too, correct?
We were not intending to close State at River. We were intending for the barricade to be placed at the north end of River Street before State Street.
Laura, Tony.
Alderman, you're.
Oh, sorry.
Well, Alderman, you're correct. And that IDOT is only concerned about the intersection of River and Route 25. IDOT will not care what the north limit is. The north limit could be Taco Grande, or the north limit could be Spring Street. IDOT doesn't care about the north limit.
And that's our choice. Those State Street and the north end of River Street where we, the northerly end of it, those are our choices. And that's something I wanted to bring up, that that's something we need to talk about how we want to do that. I think we should do the closure on River Street of everything that is bricked. Everything that is a Warneriff should be blocked off.
Yeah. That's kind of the intent of my, what my motion was, was to make sure that the brick area was closed. I didn't, I was under the impression when it was stated earlier that IDOT had some say as to whether or not State was impacted. That was my understanding. If it's not, then I just move that we close from Wilson and then we figure the barricades out right there at the, at the trail.
So the motion was to go all the way to Spring Street, which would cut off one of the entrances in and out of the Larson Becker parking lot. So is the, are we going on the motion as presented? Or is somebody.
If IDOT is not, if, if it's, if it, for clarification, if it, IDOT doesn't care where we put it at Spring or State, then I just move that we attain approval from IDOT to close River Street at Route 25. And then we can figure out where it goes later.
But we need to figure it out by this weekend.
No, no, no. But if we, if it doesn't matter where the barricades close, to what street? Or do we have to say past State?
It doesn't matter for the IDOT, but it matters for staff.
Right. And there's two questions here. First of all, we need to, Marty, would you be amenable to amend your motion that staff is directed to get IDOT approval to close River Street at Wilson?
Yes.
And, and that's what I think we should be forthwith for part one of this. And vote on that.
Yes. I think Elliot may.
Okay, so there's a motion by Callahan and a second by Meitzler to direct staff to clo, to obtain permission to close River Street at Wilson Street.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'd like a roll call.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malay?
Hi.
Ewer?
Hi.
Sharon?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller? Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Here?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Knott?
Hi.
Kansas?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Bolt?
Hi.
And O'Brien?
Hi.
So then Alan, with my, with my motion modification, then I would recommend that we direct staff to close River Street at the Fox River Trail at the bricked portion on River Street as the northern boundary.
Second, O'Brien.
Marty, I'd also like to include that it be closed off at the entrance of the State Street parking garage entrance.
Alan, I have one thing to add to that. The, there's a, there's two entrances to the State, that, you know, I'm not talking about the entrance to the garage, but the deck on top of the garage, which is across the street, a half a block up from the martial arts quads. So if we close it off there, people could still turn around in that lot.
Again, it just, nobody could use the parking deck, the lower.
The lower one. And I think we need to leave that lower one open because it does have handicap areas in it. in it. And I think that has to remain available at grade for River Street.
The other thing is for the business here, they would be able to utilize that as alternative to, because now their access to their parking lot is going to be blocked off 24/7. And the other thing are these apartments that are located here have parking spaces back in here and that offers them an alternative if the on-street parking is not available, they'd be able to park in that parking garage as well.
Could we not reserve the lower portion for those businesses that have parking in that area? I also know that the physio, physical therapy in that location will need spots for their clients and the apartment people that are behind and above thin line, et cetera, that we reserve that public parking for them for this.
There may not be enough spaces in the lower portion, so we may have to also use spaces in the upper portion as well.
Okay. You want to restate your motion, Marty?
I that we direct staff towards River Street at State to the end of the Fox River, or the end of the Fox River Trail where it adjoins the brick portion. And I'll just do that motion for that. We can deal with the parking for people in later.
So you're leaving the opening for the parking deck open?
We can make a motion separate so it doesn't cloud it up too much for parking spaces reserved for people.
Oh, I wasn't talking about the parking spaces reserved. I just want to make sure in your motion, you say to close State Street, but there's been some discussion about where to close State Street. So would State Street be closed at North River Street?
Yes, leaving the parking access.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
O'Brien.
Baron.
So I heard O'Brien was the second. So motion by Callahan, second by O'Brien to close off River Street at State Street and the, I would say the terminus of the brick at the Fox River Trail.
Correct.
And that leaves all the parking that's still available on the Larson Becker parking lot and what's on North River Street, north of the trail. All that parking would be available. Okay, can I have a roll call?
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Ewer?
Hi.
Zeron? Zeron?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Back?
Hi.
Knott?
Hi.
Chantel?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
And O'Brien?
Hi.
Motion carried 14 to 0.
Okay.
I'm presuming that staff also has direction from city council to move forward with establishing the other two outdoor public dining spaces.
Correct.
And the spacing of tables, six foot, 10 foot, eight feet?
7.5.
Yeah.
And I think we should maximize the space and be willing to, a week, a week or so into this, if we need to add more tables, to quickly discuss about adding more tables.
I've just heard back from the Hart District and they have 25 tables available.
Okay.
If you need it in the form of a motion, I move we approve areas as outlined one and two with a spacing of eight feet per table.
Second, Ewer.
Okay, a motion and second on areas one and two.
And three, really.
And, and three for the outside seating, for the outside seating areas as presented in the memo tonight.
Thank you.
And Laura, can you make sure that when this goes to, goes out that we have that attached because that wasn't attached to the agenda tonight?
Yeah, the ink wasn't on it when I got to the meeting. I will be sure it is attached.
Thank you.
Do we, so there's 25 picnic tables. I'm not sure, we obviously haven't created a count of how many will actually fit. But do we prioritize, my preference is we prioritize River Street first?
Yeah, that, that was my thought as well.
Okay.
We have a plan right now for approximately 15 on North River Street. So based on your guidelines, we'll try to maximize the amount of tables that we get on North River Street and evenly distribute the remaining between the other two areas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then can we get a voice vote on that? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for a spirited discussion. If I can figure out where we were back on the agenda. We'll be back to item number 11, resolution 20-74-R, accepting a deed of dedication for Main Street at 1033 Main Street. Alderman Callahan.
Thank you. This is a resolution accepting a deed of dedication for a portion of Main Street as stated. The city has been working with the property owners at 1033 and 1103 Main Street in relation to the obligation of the Catherine Cove Agreement. And one of those obligations was to dedicate 43 feet of right of way on Main Street in that area. The area has already been dedicated in front of 1103 several years ago. The attached deed to this agenda does convey that the land was for right of way purposes in accordance with the annexation agreement. There is no cost to the city other than the recording fees. We can do nothing or pass the resolution as stated. Scott, do you have anything else to add?
No, other than that the developers will be, or the former developers and property owners will be looking to unwind the development. The original developer passed away and so now the underlying property owners have decided to unwind that. So that'll be coming in forward to the plan commission and to you for an amendment to the annexation agreement in an unwinding of the entire development.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
It was the Catherine Cove development reference.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott? Is there anybody from the public for speaking about this?
I'm sorry.
Is there anybody from the public wanting to speak on this? Howard?
No.
Hey, hey, Marty.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Hey, Scott. Hey, Scott, what, what do you mean by unwind?
Yes. Well, if you recall, the Catherine Cove was proposed, I'm sorry, it was 12 blocks of the, might be posed, well, because the owner passed away, the land, the property, essentially dissolved the planned development and just, you know, restore the property back to just the underlying zoning, which is R1L and a R2 zoning district.
Okay, you're breaking up a bit, but I guess, are we, are we going to be held accountable for anything, the city? Are we going to commit to any kind of headaches later in life by accepting this? Any financial obligations?
No, because there's nothing that we need to do other, this is already part of Main Street right of way. So there shouldn't be any additional obligations.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Marty, are you there?
Yes, I was muted and talking to myself. So with that, I recommend, if no one's, there are further comments, I recommend resolution 20-074-R, accepting a deed of dedication for Main Street at 1033 Main Street.
Second.
Motion by Callahan, second by Rosado, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? That can go on consent.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan?
Yes.
Just real quick question regarding the last one. I, we finalized a lot of the closing of the street and everything, but there was a question as to liquor. Did we resolve that and how did we want to address that? Liquor on River Street or any of the other locations?
I would say my feeling would be River Street is okay. The other locations, because they're pretty much just open public areas without the business facing it, any of the businesses facing it, I think that would be very difficult to control in, in areas one and two.
I believe the Main Street director had a great idea where she suggested the, the restaurants and bars could sell bands so that if the PD did a walk-through, the closed street, they would be able to see those with bands. Then they would know that they bought their alcohol from the places, which would alleviate some of the concern that I know the mayor had mentioned about just everybody showing up with beer and it turning into a.
Right.
Laura, did we need to revisit that and give direction on staff for allowing liquor on River Street?
So we actually have the city council, our city attorney is on the line with us as well this evening. My recommendation in this regard was to try this on River Street first. I'm, I'm not exactly sure about the bands, but it's contemplated that the police are going to be doing a walk-through of this. We simply just don't have the manpower on a nightly basis to be able to be doing spot checks of the area. We might try this without such a program initially and see if we find there's a problem, then shift to this because I think there's, there's a certain level of administration that goes into making sure that all liquor selling establishments have the bands available to sell to people and then making sure that it's of the type like for an event that it's not something that people can reuse at, at a later date. So our thought was just to see if voluntary compliance works. Each one of these outdoor dining tables is going to have a list of what are the kind of rules to be followed, such as, you know, it's not a bring, bring your own, whether it be alcohol or food, it is, those tables are meant for people who purchased food and alcohol at the downtown businesses to use. My recommendation with regard to the alcohol is that perhaps city council gives direction to the mayor that he can use his executive powers or his emergency powers to authorize exception to our liquor code for public consumption in, at the public dining tables on North River Street.
Yeah, I believe I had set the mayor, we had talked, McHenry, their mayor, did the same thing via, via executive order. It's very clean, it's very simple. It sets the expectations as to the locations where public consumption is allowed and yet still maintains that public intoxication, serving to minors, those things are still, we're not, we're not allowing that at this point.
And it would, that would also give the city council the oversight that at their next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, we could modify or override that if we needed to.
Right.
This is Kevin. A couple of things I would add. One is that the area should be well-defined, which I think it will be. And then number two, that we probably should have signage indicating that open bottles or containers of alcohol cannot be removed from the area.
Yes. Good advice.
Laura, I know you saw the executive order from McHenry.
Yes.
To that, and that covered those very things. It covered signage, it covered a well-defined area. So I would move that we plagiarize the mayor of McHenry's executive order. I love plagiarizing.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
When we talk about a downtown business that we're intending this to be food and beverage purchased at downtown businesses, McDonald's is a downtown business, Walgreens is a downtown business. Can I buy a burger and beer and go sit on River Street? Or are we going to define this based on the type of liquor license a downtown business has, one that's not designed for packaged sales to be consumed off premises?
And that was the reason, I believe, that Sheri had mentioned a wristband was to make sure that there was a better compliance with, with that.
Do we want to exclude certain downtown businesses from this? I wouldn't think that we would want to make those type of tough choices that we have small businesses that sell packaged liquor to go. We also have, you know, worldwide corporation Walgreens that sells packaged liquor to go. But I think it would be hard for us to say, yes, small liquor store, but no Walgreens. And I think this, all of our small businesses are, are struggling in our economy right now, to the extent that we can help any of these downtown businesses, I think we help them all.
I think, Joe, your distinction was their liquor licenses don't allow for public consumption anyways. And the, the whole discussion for closing River Street was the expansion of the outdoor seating area for existing bars and restaurants, which is what the governor's directive was.
Exactly.
And it was keeping in spirit with that.
Right.
So how do you distinguish a McDonald's doesn't fit into that category?
No, as it relates to liquor more than anything. Public seating is public seating, but if we're talking about a defined area for liquor consumption, that the adjacent businesses to the River Street location would be the one serving in that area.
So for instance, Hot Pan, you couldn't purchase a meal at Hot Pan and get craft beers and then walk over to River Street and consume that?
Yeah, I think it's going to be very hard to put restrictions on that, you know, other than the area with, within, within this area, that's where it will be allowed.
The Oak and Swine is close enough to being within the area since it's right around the corner.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think they're contiguous to the area because from my understanding, they were going to have seating down on River Street.
It is a tough decision because like Tusk has a, a bring your own policy. You could bring a bottle of wine there. So can I bring a bottle of wine, grab my Tusk and go sit on River Street?
Under the rules we've discussed so far, no, there's no BYO, but you could get packaged liquor from River's Edge to have with your Tusk.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm fine with anything. It's just something we need to kind of. Okay, yeah, no, I'm fine with anything, it's just something we need to kind of define.
Well, one of the, one of the solutions that was brought up to that very question was, yes, you, you, Tusk is BYOB, but they charge a corking fee, so it goes back to the bands. If they charge the corking fee, you know that they went there and received, Tusk could sell you the band for a dollar minimum cost.
I was gonna bring that up, Marty, that somebody like Tusk with a BYOB could participate in that wristband program so that it's still supporting the spirit of how that downtown eating establishment operates and still maintaining some amount of control.
I do like that idea.
And I, and I think that there's also the ability, you know, for the restaurant on one side of the street, Tusk, and the bar on the other side of the street, Bar Evolution, to provide both things. One is the glass of wine or the wine bottle, and the other one is the food. So I think, as long as there are businesses that are there, I think we're fine, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and I think that's why, kind of going back to the bands, police walking through, quick visual, you see that the people there bought from there, it's serving the intended purpose. Other locations may be able to have onsite seating for those locations, River's Edge. Even Hot Pan, we might have exterior spots where they could consume in the alleyway right between them. So there are options. I think just overall, as, as was stated, this is new territory and we're trying to make sure that we're doing things safely and so that things don't get out of control. That if at a later point we decide, no, the bands aren't used it and people can bring from wherever, then fine, it's not a problem. But in the meantime, try to make sure that this is done as orderly as possible for a new situation.
So I don't want to create the expectation that the police department is gonna be the one checking to see if people have banned, that there's a rule about buying from an adjacent business. That's really not a safety issue, it's an economic issue. And so if another organization wants to administrate this bans program and, and do the enforcement of it, that, that's fine.
I think this falls under one of those things that we, we monitor and, and adjust to. I don't think it's gonna be an issue, I think people are generally gonna be downtown to support these businesses and do the right thing.
I agree.
So are we agreed then?
You have to legislate with the one knucklehead.
Right. Let's not do that.
Are, are, are we agreed that we, we want the consumption of alcohol to only be on the River Street section for this time, for the time being?
I guess. I don't agree with that, if Oak and Swine, if you want to order something and walk east and go to that parking lot, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Nick as well, I think the, the liquor is their biggest markup.
But they could go to River Street with it. It's not, it's closer for their customers to walk to River Street than it is to walk to the far less observed tables, because there's no adjacent businesses there. That, that could kind of be a little bit of a free for all over there on the First Baptist Church site, because nobody's really observing that.
But what if we run into a situation where all the seating's taken on River Street and somebody has their beer and they have no other place to go than east? We have to also consider that.
Well, I think we have.
Staff, staff wouldn't be in favor of the alcohol being served at those remote spaces, but it's up to City Council to decide.
I just wonder how you're gonna monitor, how you're gonna keep it controlled there. You got a giant grass parkway next to that or park next to it that, I mean, I can see blankets and stuff out there and people sitting out in their own chairs in that grassy area. And the seating expansion goes from, you know, our one strip of picnic tables to that entire corner being, you know, an outdoor fest.
Why don't we, I mean, my suggestion is, this is all new. Maybe we start on River Street, and if we see that there is a capacity problem on River Street, then we address it. We're meeting with each other on a weekly basis and we take course correction. And mayor has emergency powers, he can address things like that and on an even shorter notice.
I think that sounds good to me.
It's understood, though, it's not gonna be policed.
Right.
I think it'll be policed by the businesses more than anything, because I don't think they want to lose this opportunity because of, you know, one or two bad people or situations. I think they're gonna try and keep this as under control as they possibly can, because they see the benefit to having as many people as they can enjoy their businesses and support them. Okay, are we, are we done with this one?
Yes, I will take the direction from this conversation that I should follow the lead of McHenry and come up with an executive order for a merit issue that allows public consumption on River Street.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we move on to the next, what are the next three? We'll start off with the number 12, which is Resolution 20-64-R, authorizing execution of contract with Performance Construction and Engineering LLC for the Area 3 Stormwater Separation Phase 3 and the amount not to exceed $1,979,766. And this is, as I just stated, Phase 3 of the West Side or Area 3 Stormwater Sewer Separation. Basically, I'll just give a quick overview of this. This is the section. Construction will provide separate storm sewer system, completely removing storm water runoff flows from sanitary sewer. In addition, the water main will be replaced in residential areas of Area 3. This is the final phase, and I'll start where construction began for Phase 2 at Morton and Jefferson and continue west on Morton, past Harrison, Jackson Street, from Morton to Garfield, and then go west on Garfield to Harrison. I guess the first question that I have on this is, I've had a couple of the neighbors over there that I've had contact with wonder about how the street's gonna be laid out after this is done. Are we getting curb and gutter on that, Gary?
That's a good question. Sorry, Alan, I don't know that I have that one off the top of my head. We, we, we have been replacing curb and gutter where we've needed to and with extension, extensive excavation of the water main and the storm sewer. I believe all the most recent phases, we've had to replace the curb and gutter because we have not been able to maintain the old curb and gutter with actual construction constraints.
I guess, the question I think I've had more than, than not on that is, it's listed in here that curb and gutter, but I was trying to find through the page and whatever, I couldn't get it all to load. Is the areas, especially along Garfield, I think it is, and maybe on Jackson, where there are no gutters or curbs? So I guess that would be, I'd like to find out.
Well, if there's no, no curb and gutter today, the part of this program is to install storm sewer. So that, that's part of what's going to be done out there is, is collection of runoff into a closed drainage system, which would mean curb and gutter.
Okay, and that's what I thought by the, the ones that I had read through and the intersections that I had looked at in the memo. So, you know, I just want to make sure that that's what we're doing out there, and that's what I expected to be completely separating the two, two systems.
Andrew just told me, I'm sorry. Andrew just told me that there'll be, there'll be new, confirming that there's new curb on Garfield, but no new curb in the rural section of Morton west of Harrison.
Okay. Andrew is.
So that'll remain this ditch.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Hey, Alan. Hey, Gary. We're finishing up this year Phase 2, correct? And when will Phase 3 be finished, completed?
This is, this is the final year. So we, we, it's confusing, because the 2019 project actually was still under construction this spring. But the one, the one that's in punch list right now is actually the 2019 project. And we're gonna, we're gonna roll right into the 2020 project.
Okay, thank you. Just want to say, this is, uh, this has been a good project. It alleviates a lot of, in storm events with INI, alleviates a lot of overflow into our wastewater treatment facility. It's, it's good to, to separate the, the sewers, the storm from the sanitary, I believe. And, you know, a lot of people in that area have been having some sewage backup, sanitary backup. And so this should definitely alleviate a lot of that. So this has been a, a good job done, thank you, Gary.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll make the motion that we recommend the council Resolution 20-64-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Performance Construction Engineering LLC for the Area 3 Stormwater Sewer Separation Phase 3 and the amount not to exceed $2,680,000, that's with the contingency.
Second, O'Brien.
Motion by Wolf, second by O'Brien, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, and also of note for the clerk, Alderman Meitzler had to leave the meeting, so we are now down to 13, Alderman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is where we're gonna borrow the money to pay for this. Resolution 20-65-R, authorizing execution of low interest loan for public water supply with the Illinois EPA and the amount not to exceed $860,000. And I'll make the motion that we recommend to council that resolution.
Second, O'Brien.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up would be Resolution 20-66-R, authorizing execution of a low interest loan for the Water WPS with Illinois Environmental Protection Agency and the amount not to exceed $850,000. Make the motion that we recommend to council this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, seconded by O'Brien, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, motion carries. The two resolutions for the low interest loans, those could go on the consent agenda. I'd like to leave the first one, 2064, on the regular agenda so we can talk about it so that the public can be aware of it. All right, thank you. Up next is number 15. Resolution 20-79-R, authorizing a contract with WGI to provide parking consultant review services on behalf of the city for One Washington Place. This is the contract that we talked about, I think, a little bit earlier, that we were gonna have our consultant take a look at this, because we will be the ones that own the parking structure after this is built. And this is the, the study or the fees to, this to be done. Do you have any comments or questions?
Just, we'll note, Alan, just to say that, you know, the original company that did the original parking study, had they been taken over by this company and the same players that did the original study are doing this study. So I, I think it's something we can be confident of getting a, a good and professional job.
I agree with that, thank you. Chris, did you want to say anything?
I guess the only thing I'd say, Alan, is that there were two studies. I think this deals with the parking engineering and design of the garage. That is essentially the same company, they were taken over by another firm, but the parking study per se, in terms of the count of parking spaces, demand versus supply, that was another consultant altogether. We have not retained them again. So if I don't confuse you, so they're two different studies. One deals with the garage, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're still on board. This question deals with the garage design and elements to the construction. And, and the other study, which we also called the parking study, had to do with land use, demand and supply and demand. And that's not part of this study, am I right, Gary?
Yeah, this is for, yeah, this is for retaining a consultant to look at engineering aspects, architectural aspects, functional aspects, maintenance aspects of the garage. This doesn't have to do with the, like the parking lot counts or those types of things.
My, my guess is correct. In terms of the engineering associated with the parking deck, this is not the same company, because they were bought out, but it's, you know, a lot of the same team.
So Carl Walker has been, Carl Walker is a parking, parking garage consultant for decades. Really kind of the top parking garage consultant, you know, really certainly in the United States. And Carl Walker just got bought out by another company. So all the personnel from Carl Walker are still in the Chicagoland office. They just all have different name on their business card.
Alan? This is. Okay, Marty, go ahead.
Yeah. In a little bit of a way, isn't this putting the cart before the horse? Because we are having this study done for a parking garage that can only be built under TIF 6, but TIF 6 has not been created or defined yet. And spending money on this under TIF 5, we do not know whether or not that is recoverable under a new TIF. So.
That's, yeah.
At this time, we're not gonna, at this time, we're not actually gonna be spending any money. This is just getting the, the agreement in place, and they are in a review role, not in a design role. So only will we, we act and spend money and perform review duties and after the consultant or after the developer has given us something to review. So we are, we are not, this isn't a study that's like gonna be ongoing. It's, it's just to get them on board so that when plans come in, we're ready to go.
I guess that it, because part of this is asking for the approval for $20,000. Where is that $20,000 coming from, TIF 5?
Yes, because in the immediate term, it is something that will be paid out of general fund, but it will be a reimbursable cost that, you know, if the increment, once it exceeds the amount necessary to pay off the bond, then that's when we have the opportunity to be recouped for our costs of land acquisition, site preparation and other soft costs associated with our investment in this project.
Reimbursable under TIF 5 or potentially TIF 6? Because when we talked about the TIF, DTIF, RETIF discussion, the costs incurred under TIF 5 were still unknown if they could be recoverable under TIF 6.
So there being insufficient time on TIF 5, we would never be able to recoup our costs under that. And there is insufficient time under 5 for even bond payments to be made for the existing RDA. So, and as far. So, um, and as far as whether expenses incurred while TIF five existed, uh, if we reestablish and create a TIF six, um, the act is silent about that. So it allows us to, to take that position. Um, however, one of the things that has been a frustrating aspect of this entire project are the things that have caused delay. And so I, you know, concur with Gary that what we're trying to do here is be prepared for the day that those, uh, parking garage plans come in, that we have, uh, a formal agreement with the parking garage consultant so that we're not in a position of causing further delay.
If I could chime in one point, if, let's say the project that it's proposed and is going through the process coming up, which is the Shodine project slightly altered from what you saw last, let's say that falls apart. We still have TIF five in place and the cost associated with consulting, which includes engineering, engineering review, professional services, those are eligible costs under any TIF. So right now, TIF five's in play. If, Tim, if the Shodine project goes away or if TIF six never gets adopted, under TIF five, those costs are eligible. Now, if we never build a garage like we're planning, it's not money well spent, but to answer your question, it is an eligible cost because it falls under study and professional services. That we're evaluating a project that would occur within the boundaries of TIF five, hopefully within TIF six. But because it relates to property within a known TIF district, it is eligible for reimbursement, whether TIF six ever gets created or not, because it's within TIF five and it is an eligible cost associated with the statute. But it, but again, I would be disingenuous not to at least admit that if we never build a garage and if we never create TIF six, um, isn't money really that well spent unless you can incorporate a garage into a new project in TIF five?
But, and I, and I guess reading that contract is, Mark, is it looks like there's a 10% retainer when we're doing this. So we are paying something to, to retain them. So we're spending money and I get trying to not cause any more delays, but if we're getting another 23-year TIF, this, a, a couple of months of a delay on a, on the garage should not make a difference. They were ready to do this with 21 years left on a TIF. And now we just continue to just, we're throwing money away, in my opinion. It's, and it maybe it's only $2,000 because it's, it's 10%, but we just only spent $4,000 a few weeks ago. So I'm a no. Let's, can we wait until we actually have a project before we spend any more money?
Well, we won't know if we have a project unless we can approve the PUD. And part of the PUD is approval of the garage design. So we have to know if the garage design is valid. Uh, this is an expense associated with any review of a project that we're not going to do in-house because we'd rather seek expertise. The difference is, is this happens to fall on land that's within a known TIF district. Therefore, we can benefit from the, the TIF allowance that authorized the city to pay for this through eventual increment within the TIF district. So, you know, we're gonna have to do a design review with an outside consultant, um, if we're gonna build this garage one way or the other as part of reviewing the PUD.
But we're not gonna have a PUD if we don't have a TIF six. So to Marty's point, this is clerk before the horse.
If we put it on hold before TIF six is established, then we wouldn't be moving forward with this until next year.
Right. The idea was that they were gonna be parallel, that the TIF as well as the plan development and the HPC review, they were all gonna be kind of parallel items. Otherwise, as we put together the schedule for the TIF six, you know, we're not talking about having it approved probably till October, November at this point.
And if this is a project that the city wants to move forward with to delay its start, um, that, you know, there's, there's no reason to delay the start of it when people need the paying jobs that will build it and our downtown needs the customers that will provide.
Anybody else have any comments? I, I'd just like to say that I think that, you know, I would like to see this happen and I would like to see it happen if it happens, it has to happen concurrently and be done at the same time to make this, you know, expedite this process out and get us to TIF six, so this project can actually be built. I think this is what we have to do. And regardless of when we have to do it or how we have to do it, it's a reimbursable expense in the, in the TIF. Whether it comes out of TIF five or out of the new TIF six, it's gonna be a reimbursable expense. Any other comments?
This is Abby.
Go ahead, Abby.
Hi. And I was, I, in the last Shodine discussion, I said, this is giving me heartburn. And this one, I, I have no more specific, uh, comments or more productive comments, I guess, but it, it gives me more heartburn to think about and. I. Go ahead, Chris.
I'm just, it's a private public partnership in creating the TIF as well as, most importantly, creating the development. And the development has underlying requirements for plan review. And a big component of development is the public parking garage. We have to make sure with the help of a consulting engineering firm that has expertise and time to do the review of this garage design, that it's gonna work. And so if we're still on this path to approve the development while also creating a TIF six, then we have to undertake this responsibility of reviewing plans. The question is, do we want to do it out of pocket for the city? Or do we want to do it with TIF, uh, reimbursement potential? And I think we might as well take advantage of the TIF district and be reimbursed as opposed to, uh, just hiring this contractor, knowing that we can't reimburse him. But let me tell you, if this wasn't in a TIF district and the city was providing plans for development, we would otherwise have to review those plans. And we don't have the time or the expertise, um, in-house to do that. So we would retain a consultant, most likely whether this project was in a TIF or not.
Sure. And I mean, is, if the project changes, I mean, and, and Chris, you, maybe you have some insight too, uh, on housing trends post-COVID and, you know, is a project of this size or rentals still going to be as, as in high demand? You know, it, just from a project perspective, looking at the, the new normal we settle into, is this still a, a really good idea for us? Um, and if, if the plan changes and we've got these guys on retainer, um, if we propose a new public parking garage in some form, you know, we, we know whatever this block does, we're gonna add, we're gonna, we're gonna supplement parking. So, you know, are they going to be available to us in whatever form the project takes?
I guess, let me answer the first question first. I would rely on the private sector lending institutions. If they feel that they want to put some real money into this by lending the developer money to build the project, they must agree with the developer that there's a market for these apartments. Uh, and what you read, uh, there's still a market. Agree, I would agree with those who think we're starting to saturate it, that it's starting to get tight, but it's the proof in the pudding. If there's a lender that says, look, I'll lend you X to build this project because I think you can pay the mortgage because we believe those apartments can be occupied, I would tend to rely on that analysis. With respect to, you know, is it still a good idea to build a parking deck? You know, I, I believe that the, the developer feels that in order to rent the apartments, he's gotta make parking available. And so, you know, it's kind of, they're hand in glove. You don't provide parking, uh, you know, the heart, the apartments are gonna be difficult to rent. And we're also.
Oh, go ahead, Chris.
I was gonna say, and part of the intent of the parking deck was, you know, to cure what we found to be, per the study that we mentioned a minute ago, that there is an efficiency in the downtown district. And this additional 350 parking spaces will help those commercial enterprises that need parking within, you know, a few blocks of their, of their building.
I was just going to add that the analysis that this consultant will provide is necessary for the, uh, developer and to provide us with a new pro forma on this project. And we need the new pro forma in order for our financial consultant to do the but-for analysis because we've seen this project change and evolve. Some significant changes have been made to, uh, the expected, uh, revenue on the project. But if our consultant were to say that there are significant changes needed to be made to the public parking garage structurally, that's going to affect the pro forma for the entire project. So the sooner we know that, the better because it's another, it's another matter that could be an Achilles heel for this project.
Well, Laura, that brings a question up that I would have. Was this kind of a study done originally several years ago?
We never got to this point.
Well, we have used Walker on this project in the past.
Yeah, so in, in 2017, we, we approved a consultant's agreement with Walker for approximately 40,000 to do the design review and the construction. And then we, kind of in light of all these discussions, we said, no, we're only gonna, we're only going to pursue this from the design review standpoint. And if it actually makes it to construction, we'll come back with a second agreement at some point in the future. So that's why you only have design review in front of you tonight.
So did the design review happen in 2017?
No, because we never received, we never, we never got plans, as Laura said. So we, we never spent any money with Walker previously.
Okay, and, and that's where I had a disconnect because you talked about the previous work they did and I thought we'd done this one before. Thank you.
Well, bear in mind, at one point, we had a plan for the garage that, um, had a different footprint and frankly, I believe different ceiling heights or maybe different depth into the bedrock because we had apartments. And now we're going back to a higher ceiling requirement for the commercial. So the, the plan has evolved and that affects the design of the garage. Am I, am I right, Gary, on that?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that, that's correct. Um, we also had layout issues with the columns. If council recalls that, we moved the columns around. I think we had one meeting, one formal meeting with Carl Walker and the developer. And then they also did some review of the plans to look at the geometrics, which, which we had, um, brought before council. So it was very minimal is what, what they helped us with last time because then the project just got put on hold.
I guess, I guess Joe, the point that I was making, wish I hadn't made it, was just that Carl Walker was familiar with the project. Wasn't wrong having to teach him or introduce anything new. That's all the point I was trying to make.
Okay, if there are no other comments, um, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council resolution 20 dash 79 dash R, authorizing a contract with WGI Incorporated to provide parking consultant review services on behalf of the city for One Washington Place.
Second.
A motion by Wolf, second by O'Brien. Uh, roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler absent. Malay?
Aye.
York?
No.
Jerome?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Back?
Aye.
Knop?
No.
Chantet? There was an I?
Yes.
Chantet? Thank you. And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried nine to four.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, and next up will be resolu-, uh, item 16, resolution 20 dash 73 dash R, execution of an independent contractor agreement for economic development consultant. Alderman, Chantet?
Hi there, thank you. So we have, uh, we have a memo from Laura from earlier in the month regarding basically an extension of the independent contractor agreement. Um, we have, uh, multiple projects to do still and the intent was to have, um, a business development manager come on. And with, uh, recent, um, uh, pauses that we're taking on our budget, it seems to make sense to, uh, extend the critical contract, um, instead of, uh, transitioning duties over. Uh, and I guess if anyone has any questions, uh, Laura, is there, Laura, do you have anything else to add?
No, other than the fact that we are lucky to have the assistance of somebody who is, uh, so knowledgeable about the, uh, stat, TIF establishment process because it's like speaking another language and there are 60 moving parts to it. And, um, we are really glad that we have his expertise, uh, to work on this project for us because we, we'd kind of be lost right now if we didn't have you helping us with this, Chris.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Uh, this is Mark, I do have a question. And Chris, you're on the call, don't take any offense to this. It's a, it's a question about, um, the, the payment. So we're paying $3,000 a month and I'm not sure, Chris, how much time you're expecting to spend working over the, over the period of time that we're gonna extend the contract. So that's, that's what I'm trying to understand there is the difference in payment versus what we get back. If you're, if you don't expect you're gonna be doing a lot of work to do a TIF, I don't know.
Well, I, when I, you know, I've had my business going back to 2013 and although primarily and almost exclusively, I worked for the city of Batavia. I have had incidental contracts, short-term, non-competing. I've always informed Laura of what I might be doing that might even be perceived as competing. But I bill out my time at about $125 an hour. Uh, I've been working for the city at about $60 an hour, uh, with no, just a little more than that, with no other compensation, but because it's been steady. Uh, this new contract amounts to fewer hours certainly, but also reduction of about half of my monthly wages. So, uh, I am, and, you know, I, I, if you took 125 and I worked 30 hours a month, let me do the math, I once figured this out and I thought 3,000 was, made sense. I usually bill out my time at $155 an hour for, for meetings when I have to be there. But let's just say 30 times. This is, you know, frankly, a little bit beyond the scope of, at $30 an hour, at 30 hours a month, which I think is probably at least the first couple of three months while we're getting the reports done. I mean, I've been, I don't have to justify my time, but I'll just tell you that I've been working really hard and I will continue to work really hard for the next two months. Far, I imagine, far in excess of 30 hours a month. I'm just trying to average it out because the way the TIF deal works is a lot of your work is done in the first 90 days. You're writing the eligibility report, you're writing the redevelopment plan, and I'll be working with staff, obviously. Then it's more maintenance and ensuring that you don't get out of whack with the statute. But Laura and I have talked about this, say another TIF project comes up of some magnitude. Um, an example, uh, and I don't mean to speak out of school, but we've got certain redevelopment properties in the downtown that have good potential. And we've talked to the ownership and they've talked about, you know, entertaining the idea of doing some redevelopment and TIF. Whether they do or not, it will take some analysis on the part of staff and this is part of my expertise. So to answer your question, I actually, working on average, at least 30 hours a month. working on average at least thirty hours a month and I mean I'll tell you I've worked thirty hours this week alone on this project but neither here nor there I think you're getting a good deal I think I'm getting good deal we had an agreement going back to last summer literally last summer where I announced I was going to be retiring Memorial Day my thoughts were okay finally two things I'm gonna be able to go out to my vacation house and fish and golf and hang out second thing was I was gonna finally join a private country club to play golf well joined that private country club on March fourth they closed it on March fourteenth but that's covid that's covid so besides that no I'm being facetious but Laura came to me and said you know we're not gonna have time and budget to hire this business development manager and whatever that person was gonna make he was also gonna make about twenty percent more than that in compensation with respect to benefits here again I'm working for a straight fee you're gonna get a good deal and I'm gonna give you all the hours you'll think I that you would expect me to give you I feel it's a fair proposal it's up to you if you want to extend it's not really an extension it's a different contract you know less pay more focused and I'm willing to do it trying to help
just from my
if I could say anything you know Chris is Chris has certainly been putting a lot of time and effort into what we've been doing so far my department has been helping him out but he's been putting you know I will call it excessive but a lot of hours and and trying to work on this eligibility study among other things so you know he's been very helpful
hey Dan this is Michael so this is like a slam dunk I mean I'm gonna support it I can't see not supporting this Chris's work from the very big the very get go of this project was just been going on now for four years we were to bring somebody else new in and he'd have to learn what's going on and and Chris has knows all the horse trading that's happened he has the whole history of this project it it'd be foolhardy to just dismiss them now I I you know the the money is is worth it Chris's knowledge I mean it's it's a loss of all that knowledge I mean that's that's enough to pay for right there so I'm definitely in support of this and you know I just want to say this this is again it's a game changer for the city of Batavia it's it's fifty million dollars that's happening in our downtown I mean most cities would love to have something like this so we we really need to get this thing done and then Chris has been instrumental and pushing to get this done so I I support I support this wholeheartedly thank you
yeah so don't don't misinterpret my question as saying that I wasn't gonna support this I was trying to understand it so
oh absolutely absolutely no 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 misinterpretation
Dan
yes sir
yeah this is Marty yeah I want to support this one for the reason of the continuation for working on other development projects also we are not hiring an economic development coordinator at this time that's been put off and the savings on that were fifty four we're not saving a true fifty four we're saving about twenty six twenty seven because a six month agreement with Chris for that is going to be eighteen thousand in the meantime there are things that can be overseen that he does have the expertise to and as we are in this uncharted area we don't want to go from having Chris to having absolutely nothing so we do need that transition plan even though it is being cut back and curtailed the amount is fair for the expertise and then just a side note Chris I do think I remember seeing that movie where you joined a country club it had Bill Murray in it
that was and typically I wouldn't join a club that would have her as a member you know anyone that threshold of application process says yes come on in probably is not good for my business
gracias
so this is Laura just as a point of clarification because Chris is primarily being retained with regard to responsibilities associated with TIF six and because that does take up the majority of the time that is contemplated under this agreement that is going to be his focus and so the three member team of myself and Anthony Scott until we hire a business development manager would be the primary contacts for any development opportunities that in at this point
right and I guess the kind of the point with that though is at least Chris is still on the team for his expertise in
absolutely
because the other question that I have seen posted out in the public is if TIF six does not if TIF six fails even before then is Chris done at that point
I'm glad people are concerned on the public as to my well doing let's let's talk about let's talk about what this amounts to okay three thousand times six is eighteen thousand dollars that's thirty six thousand dollars a year right because there's no Bennys on this you know last time I made thirty six thousand dollars a year was in the year of our nineteen eighty seven okay so I don't want to argue about the value of what I can bring to the table I will say that I think I've been helpful in kind of mentoring Anthony I think I've been helpful in other areas and it's not like I'm gonna walk away I'm a I'm a cell phone and an email away from helping where I can and Laura and I've talked about this you know I'm not gonna be taken advantage of that obviously but on the other hand there's plenty for me to do and I'm happy to do it if people on the social media want to say what's he gonna do I don't know I don't know how to answer that question I think you're getting a goodbye
yeah and again and I appreciate the candace Chris it's just a question I needed to ask so
it's a fair question you should know what I'm gonna do for the amount of money and I'm I'm game on it
thank you
Laura I've got a question Marty brought up a good point Marty brought up a good point about not leaving us in a vacuum right now if if we don't do this would we then have have plans or have time and perhaps late third quarter and fourth quarter to start reaching out to hire that person for twenty twenty one
yes I guess that would be dependent upon the financial outlook I'd like to know that piece of the puzzle this is definitely that critical position for but it uh we have introduced new positions to the city in order of their priority for our needs and so I really think that we need to take a look at what we see as our financial picture for the next few years before we go adding employees
if there's nothing else to add then I guess I would make a motion that we approve a resolution twenty dash seventy three dash R authorizing execution of an independent contractor agreement for economic development consultant
second
the motion is second is there any additional discussion hey all those in favor
aye
opposed the motion carries
get to work Chris
all right thank you um next up will be item number seventeen project status Laura
okay a few things to share with you about two hours ago in this meeting I said that in the project status I was gonna talk about another one of the projects that the revitalization committee has come up with and has been working on and it's a pledge it's a pledge for businesses to demonstrate to their customers that they are following all of the guidelines that are provided by the CDC the DCEO by our Illinois Department of Public Health and K Department of Public Health in order to keep their customers safe and Jamie Sam has come up with an awesome logo for this which is called Batavia reconnects because we have all kind of become disconnected in under the the restrictions that covid has placed on our ability to interact with one another and it will offer the opportunity for local businesses to sign a pledge that they'll do these things in exchange they'll receive an eight and a half by eleven cling that they can put in their front window and that will be an indication to their customers that they're one of the businesses that has promised to abide by this so hopefully it will do a couple of things so create a little bit of peer pressure amongst our business community to sign on and say that they're going to do those things but also in the mind of the customer it's going to establish trust because many people who have been primarily locked up inside their homes during these governor stay at home order are reluctant to venture out and go to businesses with a common contact with other people and we hope that this program will give them the confidence they need to support our local businesses and and shop at our local stores go to our local restaurants and our local bars I also wanted to let you know that the city has had an opportunity to at a reasonable price purchase twenty eight thousand medical masks we utilize these for several purposes one it gives us enough PPE to make sure that we are always protecting our city employees in their work environments it's enough masks that we also can be giving them to the public when they attend things like our farmer's market and so Main Street will have a sufficient supply that their volunteers will be able to hand out the mask to anyone who's coming to the farmer's market that doesn't already have one we also are going to organize within not this coming weekend but the following weekend we want to have a mask giveaway event this has been very successful in some of our neighboring communities offering opportunity for people who otherwise aren't able to obtain a mask to have the city be able to provide that I'm very glad that we have the opportunity to do that and so the the first hours would be dedicated to our senior community it'd be a drive through event where people could get one mask for themselves and up to five masks for any any other members of their family who weren't able to make the trip over and we will continue that on successive Sundays until we think that the community has enough masks out there and will also contact our ecumenical community and for those parishes and churches that are doing drive through and drive up services to provide them with a stock that they can distribute to their communities as well let's see and community developments Shodin has provided us with changes to the RDA that were recommended by their attorney and so we will be incorporating those changes into one document and providing that to our council for their review we are starting to staff up our departments in advance of being able to open up City Hall to public to the public again but before we do that we want to make sure that we have appropriate measures to keep both the public and employees safe as they interact so at the public counters in City Hall we're going to be installing clear barriers to assist with that and so once we get those installed as well as markings on the floor so people are aware of what a six foot distance is then we hope to be opening up here and at some point in the next couple of weeks is is when we think that we will be able to open and let's see in public works we heard now today a presentation about area three and how the twenty nineteen project is basically coming to a close now and then the twenty twenty area three the twenty twenty project is scheduled to commence construction in just a few days and just have been working on catching up to some of the issues that were identified in the most recent flooding event as well and that's all I have unless somebody has a question for me
Laura I have a question I always have questions
yes Alderman Knop
I have two questions one is probably more for Chief Dyke I know we've seen on the last couple of status reports that they're working on the specs for the new engine I was wondering if he had a timeframe on when that would be going out for bid
I don't believe he's online
yeah unfortunately he's not on the call so I'll have to follow up with you on and I'll get you that date
and then the second one would be I know we've talked in the past about the stack of building permit applications that have been coming in that we're holding off on do we have a plan now that we're in phase three is there anything in place to start releasing some of those to to work through that pile
yeah let me jump into that yeah so we are working on that right now and we do anticipate that that'll be coming forward for opening those things up soon we're probably waiting until June first at this point in time but that's something that we're still working on it'll be soon
thank you very much
this is Mark I've got a question we had talked pre covid about rezoning South Batavia Avenue sorry South River to to something more of a like a DMU and I noticed the other day when I drove by that the Montessori is for sale so while buildings are going for sale it'll probably be a good time to be ahead of that before anybody buys them and wants to do something industrial over there where are we at with that
yeah that's also something we're working on it's it's we're trying to study that area to try and determine what the best zoning would be but yeah those two properties that are kind of in play are one of the things that are driving us to start moving that forward but you know we are looking at that as a study area possibly as a business development district and or a TIF district too
okay thank you
anybody else thank you Laura
thank you
does anybody have any others tonight would anybody care to make an emotion for adjournment who moved motion by O'Brien
second second
by
Malay
Yor or Malay all those in favor
aye
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 for another not so quick meeting and we'll see everybody a week from now
thank you Dan